All right, I move that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yeah, here.
I vote yes and we're back. And right now, we'll take any continuances or withdrawals.
He needs... He's working on it.
Hello, hello. For the record, my name is Emmanuel Byarm. And we're requesting a continuous calendar number sixty-five-two-five-S. We're requesting a one month if possible.
Okay. Calendar number sixty-five-twenty-five-S will be continued to May sixteen, the nine AM call. And no further notice will be given. Good afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mark Kupiak, case two hundred east Seventy-Fifth Street.
What?
Oh, okay, this is five, wait, two hundred east Seventy-Fifth?
Yes.
Five-fourteen-twenty-four-S?
Yes. Special use for hair salon.
Right.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, we've become aware that there's still some question out there with some neighbors that we think it might be productive if we have some further discussions on this. Because we'd be happy to, if we can make some small change, get along better. So I would like to ask for a continuance.
All right. Because this matter's been continued several times, right?
I understand. And to be honest, I've got my client here, I've got my expert witness here. We were otherwise ready to go ahead.
Right.
But I was advised just recently, and I mean, for what it's worth, there was an objector who filed some exhibits with some question about the building itself, you know, really unrelated to our special use. However, if we could do anything to prove the neighborhood and get along with it, we would love to do this rather than...
Have you, have you had any conversation with the alderman about a continuance on this matter?
Alderman's here.
And, and...
They won't do it, because that's fine.
You're, you're okay with a continuance? Because he's, he's offering, I mean, it sounds like you want to, you want to have more community engagement.
Yeah, oh, yes. That's the purpose of it. I mean... We would love to fit in, the applicant lives in the neighborhood. And to be honest, she's leasing space, we have a building owner, he's got a multi-tenant building, he would like to get along better with the neighbors. So if we could have more dialogue, and if there's something else that we could do that would make the case go smoother, we would love to have that opportunity. But as long as I'm asking, given the number of continuances, I'd love to have a one-month continuance though, for Lakeisha's sake.
Okay. So one thing that you should know is that next month, there's only going to be four commissioners. What's that? May is full? Oh. So, so it'd be June?
Am I allowed to speak, please, as attorney also, representing people who are in opposition?
Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. This has been continued twice now, and three times, excuse me, alderman, three times. And I think we're ready to hear this now. We filed exhibits the way in which the law, the rules said that we should file them, and everyone had an opportunity, we had a community meeting that was arranged by the alderman. The community voted on this, they voted in opposition to this, so I think we're ready to have the hearing. Kimberly Eggoen, E-G-O-N-M-W-A-N, attorney.
Any final words before I make a ruling?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. And as counsel says, we had a community meeting. Although the alderman did take a vote at the community meeting, that vote was, I forget, either twelve to eleven or eleven to twelve. So there was a divided sentiment at the community meeting. Applicant did have a lot of supporters there. We're, we're doing this only in the interest of trying to get along a little bit better. I mean, it doesn't even serve a purpose to, to get a case approved if there's still things that could have been done. And we're just willing to talk and make those, like I said, we were otherwise ready to go. But if we could do a little bit more to make the hearing smoother and, and actually maybe satisfy some of the close by neighbors a little bit better.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, just, just may I add a few things. Number one, if we're moving it further back, these residents, including one that failed on the way here, their time, their energy, their effort shouldn't be just thrown away. And May-June, because she will still function, because she's already shown that she's not a good business owner. So she will continue to operate, and that's a concern for them, is that they will have to endure two more months of the foolery that's happened. So because she's not willing to not function and shut down, and because there's not a willingness to shut down the building, then I think then to their fairness and their sacrifice, including the woman who failed, Ms. Darlene Tribute, then if he's ready, she's here, then we should be able to go on to honor their time.
Okay. So this matter has been continued a couple of times already. We do have objectors here that have properly complied with our rules and identified themselves as interested parties, submitted their exhibits, and your witnesses are here. I think it's time to hear this case. So the request for a continuance is going to be denied, and we'll hear it today.
This isn't, this is, there's still two more cases before. This is just a continuance request.
Any other continuances or withdrawals?
Good afternoon, Chairman, Friday Guston for the record. I have two matters. First one is five-oh-nine-twenty-four-S, Reyna Ninety-Fifth Ryan LLC. I believe my office already submitted a letter of withdrawal, but we would like to withdraw this matter.
Okay, calendar number five-oh-nine-twenty-four-S is hereby withdrawn.
And then my last one is the last matter fifty-eight-twenty-five-S. Applicant is Next Steps Recovery Support and Services LLC. We've been talking to Alderman Hall in his office on this matter. We're still, we're still trying to get a community meeting, which I believe we're going to get. So if I could ask a continuance for that.
And is that, this was one, this one was already, was already counted for, okay, for, for one month?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, calendar number, okay, calendar number fifty-eight-twenty-five-S will be continued to May sixteen...
Is that good?
The two PM call.
Okay.
And no further notice will be given.
Thank you.
Okay. Victor, go ahead and call the... Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I've already ruled, but you can comment.
I understood. And we did a conversation yesterday when we had discussed the, the request for a continuance. And, and I guess I misunderstood. I thought this was maybe going to be a joint request for a continuance. And I thought if it was a joint request for a continuance, that perhaps it would have been better, excuse me, better received. I did ask Lakeisha to come down here so she could hear about the continuance, but she does have supporters that she could have otherwise brought down today, which are not here. So she's here all by her lonesome. And again, at the community meeting, we had a twelve to eleven, eleven to twelve vote. So she had plenty of supporters that did turn out, come down here today if we knew that we were going ahead.
I mean, you know, an applicant that, you know, just assumes that a continuance is going to be granted, does so at their peril. And, you know, the, the request for a continuance is denied.
Thank you.
It's gonna, it might be a minute then, before you...
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so if we could have the, the three interested parties that actually signed up, if they could sit at the, in the front row with the, with the alderman. All right, would everyone who's planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you. Okay, counselor, if you want to provide a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mark Kupiak, I represent the applicant. Applicant Revenge Salon Studios Limited. On behalf of the applicant, I have Lakeisha Barnes, the manager member. I've got Liam Ryan on behalf of LaSalle Appraisal Group, our expert witness. And I've got Encore Single, the, on behalf of the property owner landlord.
Okay. First question for all of the applicant's witnesses. Do all of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, they will be admitted into the record. Are there any questions for the applicant's witnesses from the board? Not yet. I think we're going to get there. All right, I want to turn to the interested parties.
Mr. Chairman, before we start, were you going to read the recommendation?
Oh, yeah. So there is, I do have a recommendation from the Department of Plan and Development that recommends approval of the proposed hair salon, nail salon, and barber shop. All right, I want to go to the interested parties. By show of hands, who, who is that? Okay, now, who signed up as an interested party?
The distinction.
There, there were three.
Attorney.
And the alderman is...
Okay, the, the ones, and I'm referring to the ones that submitted exhibits on the, on the website, okay. Who would like, well, first of all, let me, let me get the names and addresses of those people. So for the, for the interested parties, could you state your name and address?
Oh, my name is Rodney Johnson. The address is seventy-four-twenty-nine South Indiana Avenue.
Okay.
Green, seven-four, Kimberly Green, seven-four-four-five South Indiana.
Okay, and let's get the mic in the second row. There you go.
I signed up to speak today. I have internet problems and I couldn't get anything through.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, then you, you are not going to be considered an interested party, you do have to sign up in accordance with our rules. You'll be able to speak for public comment.
Okay.
Okay, just the, the two. Okay.
Speaking on the behalf...
So for the, the, the two interests, interested parties, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted in objection to this matter are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay, those materials are going to be admitted into the record. Do we have any questions for the interested party? I do. I'm going to start.
Before you start? Some of the materials they submitted, besides their testimony, they, some exhibits that were, seemed to be some unrelated, not relevant, and some to be hearsay.
You'll, you'll be able to, when we, when they, when they come up?
Okay.
You can address it?
Okay.
And, and you'll certainly also be able to talk about it more in rebuttal.
Okay.
Okay, for the interested parties, the, one of the things that stood out to me of the, the submission that you gave was a video of the, what appeared to be of the, of the premises at issue. Who, who can describe to me what that video is showing? Okay, and for the record, just identify yourself.
Attorney Kimberly Eggoen.
Okay.
The video was not created by any of the interested parties. I believe it was on February sixth, our alderman, Alderman Hall, held a community meeting within the rules of what people are supposed to do when they want to ask for a zoning change. And at that meeting in the evening, the applicant let everyone know at the meeting, was asked at least twice, are you currently operating your business without a license at this location that's in question? And the applicant and other people with her said no. The video shows that the exact same day, an hour before the meeting, the applicant took Facebook viewers on a tour of the business with clients in the seat being serviced, asking people who were watching to come to the actual community meeting that we were at that very same night while people were being serviced.
Okay.
And Revenge Salon Suites is not licensed, they could not get a license because they don't have the zoning for this location. This has been going on for over two years.
Okay. Do the interested parties have anything to add, and I mean add, to what was already submitted? Because what's been submitted is in the record now. I don't want to rehash that. We do things differently in the zoning board now, if you've ever been here before. We used to go through everything that was submitted and, and rehash everything, we don't do that anymore, now we just get to anything new. So...
We do have something new.
Okay, let's hear it.
Tomorrow, and if you're familiar with our community, I'm an attorney, but I'm also a lifelong resident of the community. Right now, the landlord is not a resident, doesn't know much about our community. And we're working very hard in our community, our alderman is working in our community for a renaissance of Seventy-Fifth Street. It's a business corridor. Tomorrow, we are having something that has now become almost international, where we are revitalizing Seventy-Fifth Street as far as what's called the Black Wall Street. That harkens back to the Tulsa riots many years ago, they had a Black Wall Street that was burgeoning over a hundred businesses in an area. And what we're trying to do with Seventy-Fifth Street requires planning, which is the reason why we appreciate what you all do. Because the authority that you have will help us become a strong tree instead of weeds with the planning that we're doing. And when I say that, I mean, we need diversity of businesses. So when we're talking about this, having this renaissance on Seventy-Fifth Street, it's for the purpose of bringing businesses that not only benefit the person who owns it, but it has to be a mutual benefit to the residents as well. And there are things that are needed, there are things that we've had before and we don't have right now, especially in a professional services building such as this, a historic professional services building such as this. There are things that the residents work with the alderman and the ward and have been doing, these people are not just here, they literally work every day with the business, the BACP, to try and get businesses to do the right thing, to try and get landlords to do the right thing, and to bring businesses into the neighborhood. So I'm just trying to put this into a, a larger perspective for you. We need planning for this and not, you know, ten of the same businesses within a small span of space. And that's really what precipitated this.
Alderman Hall, would you like to be heard?
Yeah, first of all, thank you so much. I wanted to add on, take back, take us back rather to the last moment, from the beginning of the building's conception. To the landlord's credit, he has reached out more aggressively, of course, because of the pending matter, and has extended a desire to do upgrades and make the building more community centric. That was a desire. We ain't seen a doorknob fixed, a hammer, a nail, since he opened up his desires to help. I met him for the first time at a community meeting, which I want to go back to, in which the community said no. They did not want an illegal business continuing to operate. And what I mean by illegal is, there's no license for them to operate. The way in which I believe the law works is that if you need special zoning, any permit or anything, you apply for it first. This woman has operated a full-fledged business in which, as the landlord, he ain't going to testify publicly, because it hurts his situation with her. But there's some before and afters. Before this woman showed up in this building, there was a medical clinic that was used for singers and so forth and so on. They're getting ready to move because it's gotten that bad. Now, again, the noise that they were literally making through their wild behavior, weed being smoked, different other tenants getting things stolen, broken into, all is not allegation, is factual. So the probable cause that we have in this situation is before she showed up, before she started operating illegally, before she built out illegally, before they were literally in there all hours of the night, that building was being worked on because of violations that were fixed and was beginning to be what we thought it would be for the community. I think that it's not only a bad precedent, not just to Seventy-Fifth Street, but to the city, that businesses are allowed to function until they are caught, and then still given the opportunity to function after they get caught, simply due to votes passed. And this lady has not only done fake bully tactics, in which, to the point in which she's reached out, and if we want to use my phone, we can, and got friends who she's partnered with, with free hot dogs and free bookbag giveaways to call me, and in a very interesting tone, suggests that I support her. In addition to that, the landlord's urgency is simply because, again, she's told everybody, and use it as a leverage tactic, that she's in so deep with the money for her business that she has to, that's the second tactic. Third tactic is she showed up to people's doors, literally knocking on doors and being aggressive with some of these individuals here. So if we had to switch wards, and this was the forty-second ward, Riley's ward, or my other colleagues, and someone was operating illegally, they wouldn't even made it to you all. Then secondly, if a business owner was knocking on condo doors, if someone was literally threatening neighbors, let alone tried to do a little bribe and switch with an alderman, she wouldn't even be here. Now, she might have been on the news with Chuck Goudy. And so this standard of doing business in this ward, for years, it was what it was. But I just don't think that it's wise, I don't think it's fair, that these neighbors, who, by the way, used to have business in this two-hundred location, are continued to be exposed to terroristic behavior by business owners and then problematic tenants who are operating illegally. Then to go on the internet, which the internet don't lie, right? And the timing of the little Facebook posts that garnered thousands of views, making me a target of what could arguably be inciting... of what could arguably be inciting violence. Who in their right mind will allow this types of businesses to multiply? And so for me, the building itself is legally functioning. The tenants in the building are illegal. So extracting the building from the tenant is the objective. And I don't think that that's right for her to continue to terrorize the neighbors. And if her tenants were as they say they were on the internet, or those who frequent the building, in hours in which the lights are on, connected to these suites, the lights are like right there. These neighbors can look out their windows and see the lights on. So the other tenants in which there are daycare, community, second chance, anti-bodies, they not in there the hours that she's in. The health people, they sleep. So to have an all-night essentially juke joint slash haircut slash beauty salon. Now, who couldn't be here was my ward superintendent, who, again, the parallels between the late-night haircuts and the bottles that have been picked up, cleaned up, run the fines, you will see that before and after trash accumulation, massive loitering, threats to residents, in addition to just take away all the other stuff, illegally operating, is the standard in which she's trying to set. With a community with neighbors that has been there for 40, some 50 years, who just literally want to enjoy their property, walk down the street in a walkable neighborhood and go back home. She's preventing that for them safely. And so in the name of safety, in the name of just following the law, I'm typically, I'm 150% against. And I'm not targeting her. On this same list is a lady on 71st Street who literally, almost similar to her, had the same issue. The difference was the lady stopped because she did not know. She corrected herself, had a great meeting, and now she's functioning, in which I wrote the letter of support. So it's no bias towards her, which is a lie, which she's been trying to say. There's no anti-enterprising, which is what she's trying to say. I'm just anti-illegal. And I'm anti-threats, and I'm anti-targeting neighbors because you lost your money because you did something illegal. That's not our responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, what we're gonna do next is we're gonna go to public comment. And we'll start with you on the end there. If we could, if we could get her mic up. Oh, actually, before we go to public comment, we're gonna go to DPD, because DPD does want to make a statement.
For the record, Fernando Espinoza.
If you could start again, she couldn't, she couldn't hear you.
For the record, Fernando Espinoza, Chief Zoning Plan Examiner for the Department of Planning and Development. So DPD would like to revise the rec memo as follows. DPD recommends approval on the basis of the applicant coming into compliance and in carrying to the decision of the zoning board of appeals. Thank you.
Okay. Fernando, could you repeat that?
Sure, not a problem. So Department of Planning and Development recommends approval on the basis of the applicant coming into compliance and in carrying to the decision of the zoning board of appeals.
Okay. Okay, all right, now we're gonna go to public comment. And before we start, what happened? So I think what DPD is saying is, one, to come into compliance, you can't operate without the actual permit, so that'd be one. And then two, I think it's also pending our decision here. So they're basically, I think it almost sounds like they're deferring to the zoning board of appeals. That's how I interpret it. Okay, we're gonna go to public comment. So and everyone who does public comment is gonna get two minutes. You'll have two minutes to speak. Before we start, you'll start by just stating your name and address, and then you can provide your comment. And what I want to say here is, we've already heard a lot already about the objections, and this is not something where we need a bunch of people saying the same thing. If you have something new to add, then please do. If you don't have anything new to add, then I will end up cutting you off and moving on to the next person because we're just, this is not how we run things here. We need things that are new, but we don't need repetition. So with that said, let's start with the second row. And go ahead, state your name and address and let us know why you're here.
Darlene Tribu, president of Park Manor Neighbors Community Council, 7312 South Prairie, however, own property at 7510 South Prairie. Park Manor has been involved since the inception of the covenant agreement in 1948. We have a total of 144 blocks that are not all full block clubs anymore, but they used to be. All of these people that are present are in some of those blocks under the guise of Park Manor Neighbors. So we have a full board, you know, we have a whole organization. We didn't hear about this in the regular way that it was heard, but by the notice that was on the building itself. I'm gonna read what our board put together to say today. And I have a letter to that effect. Unfortunately, we've had a lot of internet problems in our areas. You can't send, you can't-
Pay attention at the time.
Okay. Thank you for letting us be here. After receiving notification of the zoning board, a question came up regarding the application for Revenge Salon, 275th. It's for special use to establish hair, nail salon, barber shops. In this case, there were some exceptions that were involved in the application. I felt that this was a matter requiring full Park Manor Neighbors Board input and the community at large. This will require investigation to determine what the community actually wanted for the locations of 75th Street. Okay, historically, 75th had a moratorium on these type of businesses due to too many opening all at one time between State Street all the way to Childers Grove. So based on that, opening a beauty shop, nail spa, barber shops, and at that time storefront churches. This was presented to the community by Alderman William Hall through the application process that the location did not comply with our zoning requirements, which would be the special use permit. It's less than 1,000 feet from another salon.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up. Let's go to the next.
Hello. Hello, my name is Brenda Horsley. I live at 7441 South Prairie Avenue, Chicago, Illinois. The only thing that I want to add to this is I walk the community constantly, daily, routine, three to five miles a day. That's my routine. And all of a sudden, I noticed that the sign that was put up on the building that it was, you know, zoning sign, it disappeared. Now, I was under impression that that sign should stay up at all times until you guys make a decision on this business. But that sign no longer exists. And with that sign not existing, that is falsely leading the community to believe that this problem has been solved. And that's the only thing I wanted to add.
Thank you. Sir, did you have something to add? No? Mr. Blakemore? You know, I'm not sure that you were here when I swore everybody in, so if you could just raise your right hand quickly. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you, go ahead.
I was here earlier, and I read your rules and regulations. And this is not a dictatorship here. In reading what you're, and you said you don't want to hear redundant statements. Everyone is entitled to make his or her statement. It's not what you want to hear. And reading is fundamental. Now, I understand exactly the issues that is presented here today. An overflow of these nail shops and beauty shops in one neighborhood. So I do not live in that neighborhood, but I am a citizen of the city of Chicago. Now, what impact one of the 77th communities, it impacts all. And you have the audacity to try to sound one who wants to make a statement. So again, that's why it's very, I object. I've told you my objections. And hopefully that you will listen to every one of these citizens that came down here. It's not for you to determine who to listen to. So I made my statement, and I made my objection, and thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Anyone? Third row? There we go.
Thank you for this hearing. I am just deeply saddened about us having to be here.
Before you start, can you state your name and address?
Alicia Spears, 7447 South Calumet.
Okay.
I am deeply saddened that we have to be here because BACP is allowing and continuing to allow a business to operate without license. We do want businesses. We do want a variety of businesses that we would prefer. But to continue this long is not fair to the community. It's not fair even to the person who's doing wrong. It's just not fair to them. So we need this to be expedited so we all can get about doing and building a community that we desire to live in and we wanted to push forward as a city of Chicago moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? All right, there you go.
Hi, my name is Lena Bivins. I have an organization called Aralexy, and I actually live in the Woodlawn community.
Yeah, we do have a court reporter, so if you could-
Okay. My name is Lena Bivins. I'm from the Woodlawn community on 64th and Vernon. And I'm here in support of the elders here, my community people. I'm being mentored by all these individuals here. And my request is someone who's trying to be in 2025 with technology and systems to help support them, I'm asking that after today, is there a system that can be put in place to flag when businesses are coming to this community so that we don't have to get here so we can deal with this on the front end, right? Because I think there could be systems in place that could be used when people are applying and we determine if this is something to come to the community to let them know this is a community who may not want these programs here. I don't know if it exists, but I'm asking if that's something that could be put in place so we can deal with this on the front end before we have to get down here and be organized in 2025 when there are things such as technologies and systems available to make sure we're prepared and organized administratively. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else? Sir?
Okay. Yeah, my name is Rodney Johnson. And I'm at the 74th and Indiana Block. I'm the president of the 74th and Indiana Block Club. And having been a community organizer and leader for a number of years, in support of what Attorney Kim has said, we've been working very hard to create a vibrant, you know, corridor on 75th Street. The whole history of this building, you know, is, you know, black doctors that moved from a building on 47th and King Drive that were already very, very successful to start this building. So there's a whole history of what's happening here. But the major concern is the oversaturation of beauty salons in the area. Between, this building sits between Indiana and Prairie. The two blocks on the other side, Calumet and Michigan. Between Michigan to Calumet, there are already eight beauty salons and barber shops. There are already eight. And this particular operation that the young lady is trying to open up is the real equivalent of three beauty shops because she has so many chairs. She has gone and all the suites that were there in that building for doctors, she knocked down one wall, then knocked down another wall, and created this massive suite that is gonna seat, I think she said in the video, like 16 people? So the average beauty salon might have four, five chairs? So when we've already got eight, you know, and the law says that you gotta be within 1,000 feet, she's right across from two beauty salons less than 50 feet. It's just, it's just, we have to object.
Okay. Anybody else? Sir, you are an interested party, so you're not bound by the public comment cutoff? Did you, had you finished?
Well, no.
And mind you, we do have all of your objections in writing already.
I got it, yeah. But I think it bears noting one of the things that, you know, I put in the document, that the former six-ward alderman who's now a, you know, appellate judge, Fredrina Lau, back in 2002, there was a moratorium that was put for more beauty salons, barber shops opening up because of this proliferation, overproliferation that was happening. And so this is a short, direct quote from her that she had in one of the local newspapers in 2002. She says, "We are not anti-beauty salons, barber shops, nor nail salons. We value and appreciate the hair care professionals who do business in our community and believe that we can and should have other goods and services available in our neighborhood also. The two concepts are not mutually exclusive, and we can continue to work towards that goal. We strongly believe that we have the right to determine our destiny, establish community standards, and utilize the tools available to us to have those standards maintained. We strongly reject the undercurrent in this discussion that because we are a black community, we should be thankful for any type of black business whatsoever."
Thank you for that. And I do just want to say that that is in the submission, and I don't, I don't want to rehash the submission because that was, a statement was on every written objection from all the letters that you had submitted in there. So is there anything new?
I'd-
Go ahead.
Kimberly Green. I would like to bring up the fact that the landlord of said building has signed a trespass affidavit in the past because there have been issues with loitering at that property.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, before we go back to the applicant, are there any questions at this point? All right, we're gonna go back to the applicant now. You've heard the objections, you've seen the objectors' materials. And now is the time for rebuttal. So, counselor?
Okay. With respect to any question about multiplicity of shops, okay. I would object to that testimony, that evidence, because I don't think it's relevant, relevant under Rule 7.5. I think it's not relevant because of the case law. I think this has been litigated in the courts, not just in the city of Chicago, but throughout Cook County. And specifically, I direct your attention, one case, Cosmopolitan Bank versus Village of Niles, actually dealt with fast food restaurants.
Could you repeat the case name again?
Cosmopolitan National Bank versus Village of Niles. And 118- 118 Illinois Appellate 387. In that particular case, the Village of Niles dealt with-
And that case stands for what proposition?
For the proposition that the control, the restriction of competition is not a proper or lawful zoning objective. And when they said that, they quoted the Lazarus case, Lazarus versus Village of Northbrook. And that's the Illinois- and that's an Illinois Supreme Court case. Lazarus is 31, Illinois 246. And Lazarus involved the hospital, but the same fear of potential economic disadvantage, not a proper zoning issue.
So I'm going to overrule the objection only because I think that the comments could not just go to competition arguments, but they could, it could fit under the standards as well. I agree with you that to the extent they are arguing that, making a competition argument, that that will not be considered and cannot be considered under the case law because this is not the place to decide the right business in this location or to say that this business can't be there because there's another barber shop that doesn't want competition or another salon that doesn't want competition. That is not a valid zoning objective, so that won't be considered for competition purposes.
Okay. Then I'd like to respond with respect to some of the materials filed, especially the police records, the redacted police records, which were very difficult to read because of the multiple redactions, none of which I saw related to Lakeisha, related either to the building or some other building, but not to her or her operation. Okay? So I would certainly object to those police records with the redactions and the fact that they're not relevant to her or her operation.
So with regard to that objection, and this is probably going to be true for most objections you're about to make. I'm going to overrule the objection. I do think the things that you're pointing out go to the weight of it and how much consideration we're going to give to it, but I am going to let it in.
Okay. And with respect to their materials, the internet materials and the reference to internet materials, I also looking over as much as I did and could, I didn't think it went to the criteria for the special use. So I would object to those internet materials.
Which internet materials are you referring to?
Most of the internet materials talked about either that video or some other photographs of another site, okay? I didn't see any of those internet materials relevant to the criteria for a special use for this location.
So I'm going to overrule your objection, and particularly with regard to the video that was submitted. I do think that that is relevant. I think it does go to the credibility of the witnesses. So that objection is overruled.
Okay. With respect to allegations about operating the business, okay? And understood, this case was filed quite a bit ago. We had several continuances, sometimes two months at a time. So we've had the special use pending and very clear, she's applied for the special use, wanted the special use so that she could get a proper license. So certainly the intent was there to be in compliance. Now, as far as allegations about what's transpired, I would like to point out that the City Department of Business Affairs is the one that issues licenses. Even after the zoning board would grant a resolution, applicant still has to go to Business Affairs and get that license. And in addition to granting licenses, Business Affairs has an enforcement power. Matter of fact, when we had the community meeting on February 6, we had a representative from Business Affairs at the community meeting. Matter of fact, Mr. Sneed, and they mentioned Mr. Sneed in their materials. Mr. Sneed was at that meeting and gave a very thorough presentation about Business Affairs, their purpose, the license procedure, okay? And they do have enforcement powers. When Mr. Sneed was at that meeting, and again, as they cite in their materials, one of the items was a letter to Mr. Sneed, and they mentioned that Mr. Sneed was at the meeting and after he concluded his presentation, questions were asked of him and two of the questions asked were, were any 311 service request complaints made against this revenge salon? And the second question was, was the business currently open for business? And Mr. Sneed, who was an employee of the City Department of Business Affairs and was invited to the community meeting to address the crowd, and when he was asked those two questions, Mr. Sneed says he was not aware of any complaints. So here's the representative, and I, obviously, special use, I'm looking for land use issues. I'm looking to address the criteria. I'm not talking to Business Affairs, I don't have the opportunity. But we were happy to attend the alderman's community meeting and Mr. Sneed was invited and gave a long presentation and admitted that he was not aware of any complaints and he was speaking for Business Affairs. And I can't go through every statement, but there was some hearsay with respect to what was happening because the testimony, even taken at face value, was for alleged activity inside the building. This is an existing commercial building. You're looking to operate inside the building. And you've seen the pictures of the building, actually, from the outside, looks like a very nice commercial building, a very clean commercial building, no signage because the landlord has his own rules. In addition to the city code, he's got his own rules about the operation of the building. It's a multi-tenant building, there's other tenants in that building. And he's got rules so that the tenants respect each other and get along. He's got a judgment as far as which tenants he wants and will allow in that building. So whatever allegations we're talking about occurred inside the building and some of the commentary, it was not clear who saw this, what happened, when it happened, where it happened. So one thing Mr. Sneed commented about when he was at our community meeting was that Business Affairs has the enforcement power. And the city still has the daily center, of course, but the city built a whole new administrative hearing court, 400 West Superior, rather new build out of that building, many courtrooms, and they prosecute ordinance violations. The city hires hearing officers that sit as judges, they have prosecutors, they have city employees there that prosecute these cases for ordinance violations, including operating without a license. And the important thing about this is that there is a process. And anybody, whatever the allegations are, you're entitled to due process. So if you get a notice from the city, 400 West Superior, they give you a complaint, notice of violation in writing. They give you a written complaint with a summons and you go there for the ordinance violation, you're advised of what the accusation is because they write it out, they cite a code section, and you've got a regular court proceeding to be processed, probably multiple appearances as you sort through the case and you talk to the city and you have some opportunity to understand the charges against you, and the charges are made in writing. Who saw this? Who, what, when, where? And it's just basic due process. Very difficult in zoning board, certainly the zoning board, total control over these special uses, appeals, special uses, variations, zoning board province, but difficult in hearing like this to sort out multiple accusations, verbal accusations, some of them hearsay, and again, without a written complaint, written notice of violations. So in this particular case, besides Mr. Sneed, I've been advised that Business Affairs has been out there several times because they've had complaints. And at least on one of those occasions, they were out there with the police. So again, referring to their materials, their materials, there were some copies, printed copies of emails, one from the police commander himself, Commander Branch, and one specific email that I thought of particular interest as I read through it, from a police sergeant of police, community policing, Deana Patterson. And Deana Patterson writes, this is an email on May 7, and I mean, the conclusion of her email was, "I am happy, happy to report that no license violations were found during the inspection." So this is Sergeant Deana Patterson, she's actually writing from an email address that is Commander Branch's email, and they were out there with Business Affairs and they found no violations. So it's difficult for us to have a whole bunch of hearsay allegations where Business Affairs, and I like to point out, the inspectors of Business Affairs, they have the power when they go out there and you read these stories in the paper all the time. If somebody's operating illegally, they could serve them with a cease and desist order. They could serve them with a cease and desist, where they've got a cease and desist, okay? We've got no evidence that that ever be an issue. They could serve them with a complaint or a notice of violations, which she's never got a notice of violations. And they have these enforcement policies where no action was taken. And not only, not by Business Affairs, but we've got an email from the sergeant from the police district working with the police commander. So they thought there were no violations. So I just think it's a little, again, unfair here. We don't have written notice of these allegations, who did it? And we've got subtenants in this site, so.
Counselor, I can respect that there's processes through BACP that is not, that's not within our jurisdiction. I mean, I just want to plainly ask, is she operating? Is she operating the business?
If you want to respond to that?
I'm operating the business.
And when did you start operating the business?
Oh, just to be clear, a lot of things that they see online, that was from our previous business. I had a business start in July 2019 on 75th and Evans.
Did you have a special use permit for that?
No, I didn't. I had a license for that, but not a special use.
Okay.
So that business, I've got this building October 2022. I was told by the landlord, call to see if it's zoning for the salon. I did that. I called down, hi, is this address zoned for salons? They told me yes. That gave me the green light to proceed. Once we did the renovations and everything, that took about two years, I came back down here to get the license. That's when they tell me you need a special use. So I've never, ever complained about the money that I put into the building. I never complained about that. I was told I need a special use, I contacted a special use attorney, and I went through the steps.
Can I just get clarity? When you, when did you go to the, when did the city tell you, the people, whoever it was, tell you that you needed a special use?
They told me last January.
A year ago, January?
Yes.
And have you been operating without that since then? You have not operated in that facility since last January?
I just started operating in that facility due to, I thought I was given the green light by the city, by, I didn't start operating until this year. And that was because I was told, I was given, I thought I was given the green light to operate until my special use. I had a hearing on December 18th and I was told that that day I will be getting my special use. I was told that day that I will be getting my special use.
You had a hearing with whom?
All right.
Here, I was supposed to have a hearing here.
That matter was continued, correct?
Correct. And I didn't find out that that was going to be continued until that week. So that week, I was prepared, I shut down my previous location and was prepared to move into this one in January. When I found out about every, first of all, the neighbors didn't even hear about me until I sent out the notices. So they didn't, they didn't know anything about me being in there. When I found out about this, I ran to the alderman thinking that he would be the person to help me when not knowing that this was all came from him and his voters, which I'm one of his voters as well because I live in the community. So he's my alderman too. So when he says that I'm not a good business owner, I've been a business, I teach business classes, I teach financial literacy classes in the neighborhood. I've been, I've had my own business for 10 years. I have three businesses in Chatham. So I'm just a little confused with, because when we had the neighborhood meeting, no one mentioned to me about smoking weed, no one mentioned to me about the bottles outside, no one, their only issues were they wanted light in the alley, which they received, they wanted the door locked at a certain time, which we did. No one said anything about me personally. They just had issues with the building. They, I don't drive from up north to come, I walk to this, I walk to my place of business. I walk there. So when I did the video, that was due to one of, I was just trying to get support because I have no idea what this is all about. So I'm just the vessel for other young people coming to start a business we don't know. And with all due respect, everyone over there is older than me and I respect how they feel. However, there's a new day, there's a new wave, and I've run a respectable business, been running it since 2019. That's how I'm able to continue to add a business after business. And of course, I want my business in Chatham, I live in Chatham. And so that event that you guys are having tomorrow, I plan to be there with my flyers as well to pass out. So I'm not quite sure as to anything that they're saying as far as any disruption that I'm bringing because I'm not even there. When that video that they saw, they did see one person there, that was a family member of mine, and I was told I can be in there, my family can be in there, my friends can be in there, but I was not open.
Okay, let me just, I'm a little confused. Because I thought that you said that you did start operating in there. And so my question was going to be, when did you start operating the business at 200 East 75th Street?
I went down, I came down here to get a license.
Just the date?
In January, when I got the license.
2025?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So my question is.
And then, all right, so you started operating in January 2025. Are you operating currently?
Because I have a license. So the license that I currently have, the salon was the backup license. So the idea of this business was to be able to have office spaces because I also have a tax office. So the idea was just to be able to have office spaces for other businesses who want to come in and have their own boutique, you know, dress designers, makeup artists, that was similar to what I had at the first location, which I didn't need a special use. So I was continuing that same thing down here, but I did want to still get the special use to cover me for the salon. So that's why I've been operating all this time because I'm not just a salon, I'm just, I'm office spaces as well.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, to help explain the confusion, on that email I mentioned from Sergeant Deana Patterson, I just, I read you the conclusion, but the body of the email was Sergeant Patterson says, "I wanted to update you on the business check we conducted today with BACP. The owner of the building owns the entire structure, holds a limited business license. The BACP investigator explained that the owner is permitted to lease out any of the suites in the building. Additionally, a special use license, they say, has been issued, which allows the hair salons and barber shops to operate within the building until the upcoming zoning hearing." Now, I was not out there, I'm not party to this, this was their materials and I would just point it out.
I know that that's in there, but I thought that there was a follow-up email to that. Oh, hold up, hold up. There was a follow-up email to that that explained that the person who wrote that email was confused.
And Mr. Chairman, that's a fine point. And I'm not offering this to defend the police or defend their position, but they could have been confused. I'm offering this to explain her confusion. Understand, this was the BACP inspector who came out to her site. The police officer was with that inspector. So if the BAC investigator and the police sergeant were confused, okay? And they're people who deal with the law on a more regular basis where she's never dealt with the law, I'm just trying to explain her confusion. I'm not saying whether she's right or wrong, okay? I'm just saying the confusion factor.
I understand.
I have a specific question as well. So you're saying that you didn't start operating in this facility until this year, based on the initial application for special use that happened in December of 2024, then 2025? I'd like a little bit of an explanation on this, I believe it's an Instagram post from January 17, 2023, for 200 East 75th Street, that specifically calls for now leasing beauty suites for hairstylists and barbers. That's two years. that specifically calls for now leasing beauty suites for hairstylists and barbers. That's two years ago. At this same location. And there are pictures of built-out suites that this post says currently have rentals available.
Correct. I never got a chance to rent those spaces out due to the building being shut down. So like I said, when I signed the lease, we started to renovate immediately. Once the space was available, once the spaces were done and we're putting it out with marketing, yes, I never got to open due to the building having to shut down. So that's where that post came from.
Okay. And I have a question about the specific suites themselves. So you say that they're, it's key fob entry, so each suite has its own exit and entry. Is it, like, are there individual suites that, as you're leasing them out, that person will have the ability to come in and go as they see fit within the space that you're leasing?
Well, we have hours of operation, so yes, they do have the option to go into their suite, um, as they please, yes. But we do have, um, hours of operation that we run. The key fob is actually for the actual vis- is for the building.
For the whole building?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so how, so anyone that leases from you is subject to the hours that that.
That were open, yes. So a lot of people, you know, I don't have young people, I'm forty years old. I don't have young people working and, working with me. Everybody has, gets a background check. They're either referred, and I've been in this business for a very long time. I'm well-known for having suites. So I have a list, a waiting list of people, so everybody is, is screened. We, so to answer your question, yes, we, we're open Monday through Friday. No, we're open seven days a week from nine to nine. Those are the hours. But I don't have any people that stay in late. If they see someone out there, it's not, it's not to do, it has nothing to do with the salon. That's a busy street. We're, we're right across the street from the gas station, and then we're across the street from the, a popular liquor store. Like Seventy-Fifth Street is, is kind of like Boys Town on Seventy-Fifth Street, or you know, those, those streets up north that are happening. That's what Seventy-Fifth Street is. And that's what it's always been.
Hold on, hold on. Um, okay, uh, did you, um, do you have anything further?
Um, uh, Mr. Chairman rebuttal. Would you like to say a few words in response to?
Hello?
I'd call Encore Single, he's on behalf of the ownership of the building itself.
Hi, my name is Encore. Um, so I just want to give a little bit of context. Uh, we bought this, uh, building back in twenty twenty-one. Um, it was, it was vacant, and our goal has been common, right? I mean, how do we re-energize a building, a vacant building? Um, and you know, when, when, when we bought this building, we reached out, we did a lot of marketing that we need business owners to revitalize this building. Um, and over the last three, four years, we've been successful to bring a lot of good businesses, a lot of good resources in the building. Uh, we have CAPS, a workforce development, uh, team. We have a medical clinic, a financial services, uh, a children's services organization, uh, a seniors organization, and, and salon suites, right? I mean, we have eight suites, uh, completely remodeled. We did a lot of investment. I, I feel a lot of the, as, as, as we were revitalizing, we were learning about the community. We did have one tenant, um, who was a program with City of Chicago. They would, uh, bring in people with, um, different backgrounds, uh, to train them. And there were some smoking of weed. We, we had to evict that tenant. Um, we, our goal was to bring in good entrepreneurs in the building. I mean, that makes our life easier. Uh, career is a good resource in the community. Uh, someone can walk to get things done. When I met Keisha, um, I, I checked out her other building where she was operating. It was very professional, very nice. I liked what she has to say. She provided me a really good plan on, you know, she's, she has her vision. She began from a small, um, suite model by herself, and she's been, she, her dream was someone gave her an opportunity, um, to, to, to rent a little space and create a business. She wants to do that for others. Um, so, so I bought it, bought that vision, um, and, and, you know, and I, I asked, we asked all our tenants to follow the due process of zoning and building permit and all that. She did make that phone call. She did let me know it was on, and I did check D three one. And it, special use was something that caught both of us off guard, right? I mean, after, because there was a lot of money put in, investment. I'm not giving, uh, money as an excuse, but, but that was a process that was done. Um, I feel a lot of the things, as a business, we have multiple tenants. Whatever goes in the building or around the building gets thrown at Keisha. Um, for example, the weed issue, that tenant is evicted, that's got thrown at Keisha. The bottles and all, we deal with a lot of trash outside our building. A lot of that, uh, there's a lounge there, people in the night come and drinking, they park cars. There's a lot of outside stuff that we, we're trying to fix, uh, proactively, uh, but, but there's still a lot of other factors that affect the building. Uh, for example, trash can around the, uh, trash around the, around our trashcans. People have broke into the, uh, into the locks, uh, some contractors, they put their building material, creating mess, but we try to clean up, get a bigger trashcan. So what I'm saying is, like, a lot of the problems they're talking about is, is, is around the building that kind of goes into Keisha. So there was, um, on January eighteen, I just want to give you an example, uh, we have another tenant, uh, she has an office space. Uh, she was celebrating her mom's eightieth birthday. Uh, her ma- her mom funded her business. Uh, uh, she, she, she has a PR company, she has an office there. And, um, there, there was no dancing, no drinking. She had asked me for permission. And neighbors thought Keisha was doing partings and drugs. Uh, B A C P and inspectors came in. This has happened five, six times, and I have talked to, uh, multiple inspectors. They're like, there's nothing wrong. You might have seen the reports, uh, no weeds, uh, no violations. Because we do have cameras. After that one experience with the tenant, we, we did put a lot of cameras in the building. We don't, we don't want smoking weed. We have kids in the building. We have these, uh, City of Chicago programs. Um, so, so I feel like the, their, their allegations are, are whatever that happens around the building gets thrown at Keisha. The, her salon suites, I didn't bring, I had a lot of material with the building, how, how it's laid out, and different tenants we have, uh, some pictures of her suite as well. She, she put in a really good investment. I feel she's a good business owner. Um, and, and some of the issues within, with, with the neighbors have, we, we can, we can correct that. I mean, the number of salons, all that, you know, I, 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 I get it, competition, but uh, from, from my understanding, salon suite is more of a target business. You know, they have their own clientele, they have their own, uh, you know, it's just not, I don't allow any advertising, when she was, you've seen the pictures, except the people who are on the window, they can put a little board, the first two tenants. But we don't allow any, any advertisement in the building. So, I mean, we try to take good care of the building. This is, we, we usually invest in, uh, suburbs outside of Chicago. This was our new experience in, in South Chicago. So we're learning a lot, we're making improvements. Again, our goal is to have a resource in the community, have good entrepreneurs invest, that's how they create jobs. Uh, someone from Soul Veg came to me the other day, they're like, there are a lot of people from your building who come eat, eat food from us. There's a grocery store. Um, when the building was shut down, uh, they had said, hey, what's happening? You know, we had a lot of people buy from us. So I think we, we do make an impact. We do bring in traffic, uh, to other businesses. And, and in, in my assessment she went through, I made her go through all the permitting process and everything. I think she did her all, all her due diligence. Special use, I'm going to be honest, caught both of us by, you know, this is something I, I'm not used to again. In suburbs, we have commercial buildings, anyone can open hair salons. Um, to me, a hair salon business, and, and I, I get the, the past experiences, hair salon businesses. Um, you know, they, to, to, to look good, to feel good, I mean, those businesses are, are, are important. So, so I'm, I'm supporting her, her business. I mean, there, there are things. I met with the alderman yesterday, uh, saying, hey, you know, I'm stepping in. Keisha had asked me for help. Can I step in into this process? This is really complex. And, um, you know, I said, I met with the alderman, I said, you know, we can, I can help work with the community and resolve some of those issues. And he agreed that we're going to have a continuance. So, so some, for some reason, continuous was denied, and I understand that, you know, there are a lot of neighbors. And I called Keisha, I'm like, you know, don't bring your supporters, we're going, we're going to try, we're going to, we're going to get the continuous. And I was bad on my part to assume that we will get the continuous. So I just want to give, give a little bit of perspective. We're, we're trying to work hard, create a resource in the community, not bad intentions. We, we brought a, got a lot of good tenants. She, she, she has a good work ethic, and again, she, the, the, the special use was something we, we did not, we, we, we did not know.
Thank you. Any, anything further?
Um, anything further on, on rebuttal versus my, my summary?
Yeah.
Well, I think that, um, hours of operation, anything special you said that you wanted to spend?
Yeah, I think, can I mention one more thing? Um, we do, uh, and I think some of his is hearsay, and, uh, we do lock the building at ten PM. We have alarms going on. Uh, someone goes in, uh, they, they have to enter into the keypad. So this is not like, you know, twenty-four by seven. The twenty-four by seven, um, I, I think twenty-four by seven was one event during New Year's. Uh, we did, so we, we, there, there was an event that happened, someone broke into the building. So we put ADT alarm, uh, at ten, ten PM, um, it, it turns on.
But even if the building is twenty-four by seven, which it's not, a lot of their issues don't have nothing to do with me, the salon, you know? The, and then the, one of the neighbors said that I opened up walls. I didn't open anything. I put new floors, I painted, new, new lighting fixtures, all of the, the rooms were already set up as individual suites already, you know? So I, I, I love the building. I know what it once was, but as of today, it's going to be, it's going to be great. You know, I'm going to talk about it when I'm their age and say what the building was. So I know what it once was, but I mean, things change. I haven't, of anything, I've added value to the building. I've added value to Chatham. As any of their concerns, Encore, he's going to address them with no problem, because we don't want to have no upset neighbors, nor do we want to lose our business or have any, any issues with the, with the community. But unfortunately, after the last meeting that we had, they kind of have a lot of issues with a lot of the businesses in the community. They have an issue with the vegan spot. They had issues with other, with other, with other biz, they, with as far as parking, not having people parking in front of their homes and things like that. Like, it's kind of like, you can't really satisfy the Chatham community, you know? But unfortunately, it's a, it's a, it's a thriving business. It, it's going to be busy. That's, that's what you want. That's what you want to see. So as, I can understand if I was bringing chaos, but I'm not. You don't even, you don't even, you only know that I'm there because I sent out this, because I sent out the notices. Uh, we, I come in, I come, I come to that building every single day, twice a day, in the morning to do a walkthrough. And I, as if it's my building, because I have Encore's back, I come through, do a walkthrough in the daytime, and I come back at night. You'll see me there. I don't know, I've never seen them. You'll see me cleaning up around the building. I see the bottles, I see the trash. I picks it up. I have my eighteen-year-old son come on the weekends and clean it up. So I'm, I'm just not, the things that there, everything I'm telling you is the truth. Unfortunately, I know that some people need to sway the truth a little bit to, you know, try to make things work in their favor. But as far as the chaos, that has absolutely nothing to do with me and my business.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, just two quick points with respect to, uh, the allegation of late hours. Just, just to put it in perspective, you saw from the pictures we submitted, there is a gas station right across the street, a twenty-four-hour gas station. So it's not, even the allegation of, uh, some late activity inside the building, you know, doesn't compare with a rightly, the twenty-four-hour gas station. And then some suggestion that there might have been a prior moratorium on, uh, on hair salons. I, uh, I, I was never aware of that, and I've been practicing for a few years. The city's got a moratorium in some areas against taverns and packaged goods stores, liquor stores. I was never aware of a moratorium on, um, on hair salons, for what it's worth. So I guess that's our rebuttal, although I'd like to have a, a summary on the special use criteria.
All right, uh, before we get, uh, to the summary, are there any questions from the board members for any of the applicants, witnesses, or any of the objectors?
Questions. Um, what are the hours of operation of each of the businesses in, in that building?
So, uh, it's a community building. Um, we open at, um, locks, front, front doors open at seven o'clock. And, um, doors close at, uh, automatically closes at nine, uh, ten, I'm sorry. And, um, the, the alarm comes on. Um, so, but there's a key fob, key fob access, uh, only the, uh, nobody can enter after that. Uh, even during the day, you can just enter from the front. Only the employees or the owners of the businesses can enter from the side doors. Um, so there, there are three cameras on the, on the, on the front side.
So now, if I'm, if I'm a, um, if I'm a business owner that has a space in your building, and I want to get in there at ten thirty at night, uh, can I do that without triggering the alarm?
No. So you have to punch in, in the alarm, um, to, to open it up. So you usually has to be, you usually has to be owners, uh, who has to do that.
Okay.
Punching the alarm. So we had, um, if someone needs to get their stuff, I mean, or something, so they'll have to dis- disarm that and then, then get in.
Do your tenants know the code for the alarm?
So, uh, yes. We, everyone has a unique code, so we can track who's coming in and who's coming out.
Just the owners, just like me. Like, my tenants don't have the code to the alarm.
So the people who rent your salon suites, they don't have the code? Okay.
So the owners have a code?
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so is there anything in the application that states that nobody will use the salon uh, cubicles after nine AM, I mean, nine PM?
Um, there isn't, but there can be, you know, it's just that there's, whenever someone fills out an application, I ask them what are their hours. So that kind of, I ask them things like, you know, their date of birth, that lets me know how old they are, ask where they live, let me know where they live.
No, no, no. My question is, your application to the zoning board of appeal?
Oh.
Um, did you include hours in the application?
Okay.
I forget.
Oh, yeah, I put nine to ten.
And, and I, one thing I want to clarify, we have no drug policy, anything like, there, there, the last tenant who was smoking, they were evicted. We have a lot of really good businesses, City of Chicago programs in the building. I mean, if any of that happens, I mean, that's, 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 that's an immediate eviction for us.
Um, if you're doing.
Just so you know, the, the application or the, the, um, the findings in fact, uh, say the salon will be open Monday through Saturday from nine AM until ten PM.
Yeah, that's what I just heard. But my question is, is that mean you're making appointments up until ten o'clock, or is everyone out by ten?
Everyone is not, actually, everyone is supposed to be out by ten. They're actually out before then. I've seen people done at five, six o'clock. The only times that we are there late is if it's Mother's Day, you know, the holidays, Valentine's Day. That's the only time that we've ever stayed later.
So two questions. One is, do you do braiding?
Braiding, yes. We have just, uh, we have one braider.
And does that braider, I mean, I know braiding can be, take as long as twelve hours in some cases.
And that, and if that's the case, then they start at seven. But like I said, they, they have to be done at ten. There's no, you know.
So, and would you have objections if there was an earlier time that was included in, in a board, uh, decision? If there were a board decision supporting this, an earlier hour for closing? And the other question I have is, when you got your license, I don't, I used to be an alderman, and I was an alderman when we passed this ordinance. Um, and we passed it as, at the request of a number of aldermen, including Alderman Lyle. Uh, and the purpose of it didn't have to do, it wasn't competition. It was that in areas where there were, uh, lower-density residential, uh, uh, units zoning, that with, um, a certain B zoning that I can't remember, but you probably know, um, but apparently is relevant here, that, uh, that, that there was a desire to have an opportunity for the zoning board of, uh, for special use to come in front of the zoning board, because there were issues in this, in these particular communities that included Chatham, where there were later-night, um, activities that were disruptive to the surrounding neighborhood and the residences behind them. And, um, and there were a number of ways in which they were disruptive. So from the, so part of our special use ordinance is confusing to people, because sometimes we pass them, I'm speaking as an alderman now. We pass things as special uses because the alderman wanted to have, make sure the community had input, because they could be controversial or there were other issues. And it works both ways, you know, but it's a double-edged sword in some ways, but that's the purpose for it. And so because there were other parts of the city where this wasn't an issue, it was made, there was the designation to say a thousand feet. But it, it was not to say you couldn't have anything within a thousand feet, but to say because we had these issues in some areas, that then let's make it that way. Some of us, like for me, it wasn't relevant, and, and I had issues with it. But I understood that there were parts of the community, of the city, where it was relevant, and this is one of them. So I think that when we're looking at it, we should know what the purpose of the ordinance was. So to me, the issues are really. So to me, the issues are really, is this, or can it be avoided if it is? Or what's the clarity for me is about, is this speaking to those concerns that were raised in the reason that we put the ordinance together? And, and that's why I'm asking these questions. And that's why I wanna know your willingness to, to take on, to think, if we put additional requirements in something, if that's something that you would, you would maintain. So that's one thing, and you answered, yes.
Absolutely.
The other question I have, though, is important, I think. When you went to get your, your, it sounds to me like you have a multiple business plan, a diverse business plan. So when you went to get your license, business license, did you state on your business license that in addition to the office space, you were also going to have a salon?
Yes, I did. Because they asked me what businesses are, because at that time, I didn't know.
No, I understand they always ask that. Did you include everything?
Yes, I did.
Including the salon?
Yes.
And you were told specifically what?
Um, I was told, with the first time or the second time?
First.
So well, the first time, it was, it wasn't no problem. I told them, because at that time, I knew exactly what businesses I had in there. So that was, that was approved. The second time, I told them what businesses I wanted to have in there, and that's when they, that's when they approved that license. But that, at that time, that's when they approved the first license. Then I came back.
That included the salon, or no?
Um, it didn't include the salon, no. It didn't. So that's when I came back, and I said, because I started getting, when I realized I was closing the first location, I'm like, okay, it's gonna be majority salon individuals in here, because at first, I had a photographer, I had a boutique, I had, um...
Okay, so it included the second time, and what did they tell you?
That, that's when they said I needed special use.
And when was that?
In January.
Okay, so the first one you're talking about was the one two years ago, but you didn't actually say it was a salon, which is why you were not told you needed the special use. So when you were told that you needed a special use?
Because they told me, when I went in, in 2019, they told me it was, it was, they said, what are you doing? And I'm explaining to them, and they said, okay, these are called administrative offices. That's what they called it. So when I went again, I said the same thing, administrative offices. And that's when I got that license. So then, when I realized, okay, I'm gonna need...
And when you got the, the, the one for the businesses, and you already had set up for the, for the salons, at that time, or any time since then, have you operated the salon?
Say that one more time.
Since that time, at that time, and since then, at any time, has the salon, have, have, have those suites been operated as a, as a salon?
In, yes, since January.
So you, okay. And that's because you missed interpret, or you didn't, you didn't have the VDA, because you didn't get an approval?
The reason why I'm operating is because I was told that I could.
Who told you you could?
Um, every time the city came out.
Yep.
Yeah, even on January 18th, city came out, and that was like my understanding as well, BACP came out.
You're talking about BACP?
Yeah, someone came out, and then they said, someone complained, Keisha is having a party, January 18th.
Having what?
Keisha is having a party, January 18th. Someone came out, they said, we're building department, someone complained she's not, should be operating, and they came out, and they said, everything is okay, and then they left.
And they told me to put my license outside.
When they came out, was there anyone using the salons?
Yes.
They saw people having their haircut?
Yes, I, I think I might have video of it, but yes. Because the...
Look, guys, I mean, I, I, I think there was a confusion on our side. I would not, like, there's a children's services open up under Allison's right now. I, I asked her the same thing, hey, go, go apply for zoning, and she was told she can't even open, and she had to go through zoning application, and you should have that zoning application for Allison's under your, I made her do the same thing. I think there was some confusion with this process, and then, 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 then she's, the, the, the caused her to start.
So I think the, the issue that I'm having is that there's, there just seems to be some inconsistencies, right? So the application says specifically hours, Monday through Saturday, 10:00 AM, or 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, right? You're saying now that you operate seven days a week. So it's, it's inconsistent with your application, which I find to be problematic.
On Sundays, most beauticians are not open on Sundays. However, I do give them the option if they want to come in by appointment only, because we, the reason why...
But the application itself calls for your hours, right? So, so it just feels like, it, I don't know if it's, if it's a mistake, or if it's a misrepresentation. That's where I'm having a hard time, right?
What it is, is I don't do hair. So I, I'm, I, what I set this up as if, as a client. So as I learn, I learned from my text that, okay, normally, most salons are closed on Sundays and Mondays, but I know that these people for sure want to work Monday through Saturday. So nowadays, you got some people like, you know what, no, I work Sundays. You know, with everything that's going on, the economy, they say, I'll work Sunday. So I didn't know, okay, now I need to go and add Sunday to the hours, add seven days a week?
So this is, this is where I, I'm, I'm struggling with this, because it feels like the cart is before the horse in, in some instances here. So the... while I very much respect the fact that you're, you're an entrepreneur, and you're trying to encourage those who are starting their careers, starting new businesses, I think there has to be a fundamental understanding of what it is that's going into your suites, right? And understanding the rules that go behind that, because at this point, there has not been a special use issued for salons, for a salon to operate at this site. It's happening right now. That's a problem. The hours are in your affidavit that you have set forth. It's inconsistent with your testimony today as to what's actually happening. So there needs to be a little bit more clarity on what you are saying you are doing, and the rules that are, that you're subject to as part of running this business. And I can understand confusion, that, it, it's a complex process. However, I, I'm struggling with, it feels like things are just starting, and then you're gonna figure it out later, and that's just, that's not good practice.
That's, I understand that. I will say, I'm sorry, Encore, so just to, just to give you an example of my own business, my, if my tax office, I believe, is listed Monday through Friday from 9 to 5. However, I'm in there on Saturday, I'm in there on, as an entrepreneur, you're, it's, it is all, it, it could be, it could vary, so...
But when you're serving clientele that are outside of the hours that you're stating, that's inconsistent with what's being represented, is what I'm saying. So it, it, it goes to credibility of what you're saying, whether it's honest or not. That's, that's where I'm having a hard time.
Yeah, I guess, I don't mean to be dishonest. It just, it just happens that way, because if I'm saying my hours are 9 to 5, and I got a client that says, you know what, I can't get there till 8, I'ma wait for you. I'm, I'll be here, I'll wait, I'll take you at 8. So that's why, you know, so when I found out that some of these, out of 13 people, only one person works Sunday, because she does like, um, wed, like weddings, or some type of, some, some events that she has downtown every Sunday.
So now with DPD saying that their recommendation is contingent on what we pass as a zoning board of appeals, if we say it's consistent with your application, Monday through Saturday, until 10:00 PM, Sundays, you have said in your application that you're not going to open. So how, you, you do understand that, like, when you have tenants, you are, you, as the, you're the, you're the landlord, but you're effectively the sub-landlord of all of the individuals who are operating within your, your leased space. You're gonna have to hold them to the same standards that you are committing to, because the licenses, the special use would be under your name. Are, and you have a number of licensed businesses that are operate, licensed professions that are happening, that are operating in your spaces. Are you confirming that they all have the proper licenses to do the, to do the work that they're doing? Okay.
Only, right now, it's only three people. I, I lost a lot of people.
Okay.
Keisha, what they're saying is how you're all need to be out of the building by 10, whatever hours you have, it's, you have to enforce that.
Absolutely. I, there's, my, the people that I have are very solid, and they're very loyal to me. The individual that works on Sundays, she comes in and she does wigs. She doesn't see, she doesn't have an actual client. She comes in and she preps her wigs and for her events, so that she doesn't have an actual client in the, in the chair with her.
Mr. Chairman, we would ask Leif to correct that application and include Sundays, and she's already said that if the board specifies hours of operation, she would accept that condition.
And also, just so you know, the, this came, because I originated my business in Bronzeville. I'm, I left Bronzeville because the, the rent was extremely high, so therefore, I had to charge my tenants a lot of money. And unfortunately, you know, this business, sometimes the rent is the amount of someone's mortgage or their car note. So when we moved to Chatham, I was able to lower the rent so that everyone can be able to pay me comfortably. The Bronzeville clients, we have a lot of celebrity clients that didn't want to be in a open salon space. We have a lot of basketball, the Bulls basketball players, the Bears players come and come see us. A lot of the people from the Chicago shy TV show, that's where the suites originated from, for privacy 101. We also have a lot of autistic kids who need that 101 time. We have a lot of women who's suffering from hair loss, who don't want to, myself, who don't want to be out in the open while they're getting their hair done. So I understand it's oversaturated with salons, but it's not oversaturated with salon suites. I'm the only salon suite in Chatham.
Anything further?
Brief summary?
Wanna sum up?
And just a brief summary, and, and I, believe me, we, we respect the community and what they're doing in, in the community, and we, we actually think Lakeisha would be a, a nice addition, because one thing gets lost, the, the customers that she, she will bring in is actually bringing people to 75th Street, and potential spin-off business, et cetera. But I'd like to go back, if I could, just to briefly to the criteria, because much of this has been a little bit beyond the criteria. And with respect to convenience, the reason she likes this building is because it has onsite parking, which is, you know, not usual in these cases. They, the landlord's got 40, 40 onsite parking spaces that are available to her, which is great for safety and convenience of the customers and clients. And for that convenience, kinda left out of the conversation, is these professionals that she would sublet space to, it's a great opportunity for them to continue their business without a big upfront investment. She's made that investment, so they could come right in, continue their business without having to pay for a build-out. So actually, very convenient for them too, this business model. Significant adverse impact, this is, this is hair salon, hairstyling, hair braiding does not have a bad effect on the community compared to other more intense special uses that you've had. Character of the community, this is an existing building. It's a commercial building, existing building, looks like it's been around for a while, certainly fits in with the other commercial buildings on 75th Street. Good spot for the, a good spot for the business. Operating characteristics, you know, you could specify the hours, correct the hours, and include Sunday, and she's, she's happy to observe that. Landlord himself has his own rules and regulations with respect to the hours to also enforce that. And again, as she mentioned, a lot of business on 75th Street, right across the street is a gas station 24 hours. So it's not like she's making noise in the neighborhood that's otherwise not there. And pedestrian comfort and safety, first floor, walk-in, front door on the sidewalk, and actually, there's a bus on 75th Street, there's a bus stop right out in front of the building. So for her, she wanted to be in Chatham, wanted to be on 75th Street, which is a beautiful street, and getting better all the time, and wanted this building because you got an onsite parking lot with 40 spaces. So as far as our special use criteria, I believe it's right on. And as the landlord said, because it's a multi-tenant building, does not allow outdoor signage. So if you look at that building, it's a very clean building, you don't even know she's, she's operating in there. So compared to other special uses, this addresses the criteria very nicely. And again, on the enforcement stuff, business affairs can en, 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 enforce all their rules and regulations, if, if, if there's a need to.
Okay. Oh, you, you, what's that? All right, there's, there's one last question about parking. All right, go ahead and ask.
Okay, okay. What I'd like to know is if the parking lot is a factor in some of the issues that you have? Is there needed to be lighting? What are the things that are needed to be there?
One of the issues I wanted to go back to is, number one, the building's already been shut down.
I'm sorry, what?
It was shut down, it was shut down already for violations known to mankind within the last year and a half. I know this because I did a walkthrough, and at one point, I went in my office there. So what I witnessed was concerning illegal operation, as already been described. Secondly, when it comes to the parking situation, he does not secure the lot. It has been the center of issues after issues, had to essentially stalk to get a trespass affidavit. To this end, though, the idea and the notion that this is because of 75th Street culture at night is not true. People have come and gone, in and out, seen it with my own eyes, frequently, that building. It's three entrances that's on 75th Street. One on the front, two on the sides. The parking lot, as close as going eastbound, is literally consumed with cars that are part of this illegal operation. And so the parking is a problematic issue, because number one, the amount of people that are going there to get serviced after hours, it exceeds the amount of parking spaces available. Secondly, in addition to that, the proximity...
Sorry, wait a minute. When you say after hours, you mean after 10:00 AM, 10:00 PM?
Yeah, after 10 o'clock, where it's supposed to be shut down.
That's the clubs are over there, we're right across the street from the D R line.
Essentially, at the end of the day, I was very nice and didn't cut none of y'all off, y'all being very rude, it's for, it's Good Friday, let's have a Good Friday. So essentially, the back and forth, in and out, has nothing to do with the club, because Francis is closed. It's been closed for month, no, almost two years now, for not having a license. Secondly, so Vegetarian does have a ZBA license, but they're not an after-hours spot. Thirdly, Lim's closed earlier with this, the biggest traffic spot before you get to Calumet, they close early. A and S has locks on their gate, which they cooperated since day one of me being in office. All roads lead to this after-hour beautician spot that uses the alley, basically, essentially, at times, holding up spot, uh, holding up traffic in the alley, in and out of that door, you can't see it there, the door to the west. And so it's a problematic traffic hazard, in addition to people sitting in cars that have been seen leaving out of, you see that little white car at the end, right there? Yep, there's a door. So essentially, all the traffic is essentially right there, out that back door, in which Brenda Housie, who lives behind the place, has primetime view, has seen this, and I know because she's called and text. And I've gotten up out of my bed and just sat there on the corner and watched. Ain't nobody lying. So at the end of the day, the parking doesn't even, is not sufficient for all of these tenants that he's mentioning? All these second chance program attendees, parents in the daycare, a salon? If three businesses are functioning legally, which they're not, at the same time with the health clinic, where are people parking? The front of the building is loading zone, so there is no parking to even su, uh, support the illegal operations with the partial legal businesses.
I was asking about, okay, I got that, but that's a different issue. I was asking about whether or not, I, I just wanted to know what the prob, from a safety perspective in the community?
Yeah.
And the issues that people have raised, if that related to the parking lot, because...
Absolutely.
And if, if there was lighting or fencing on the lot, would that be helpful?
Yeah, so again, the urgency to fix everything came yesterday with his lawyer in my office, essentially trying to shake me down, which my lawyer's gonna look into that. And we've asked this building multiple times, secure the lot. He ain't done it. Now, Brenda here, who lives right there, at the last community meeting, which we held, in which it was vetoed by the community, in which illegal operators were participating in this, with illegal IDs, by the way, he finally appeared, in which he said he would agree to the things that they were mentioning based off of their observations. Have jobs done to say technically it was done? It's the difference between a landlord and an investor. Landlords are present air day, so the absence of him with cars using this lot after hours, littering, look up the fines for trashing, over-usage, is all connected to this parking lot. It's the...
No, I, I get it, but I'm just trying to get at potentially, how does, what the solution to these problems are.
Yeah, the...
So the question is...
I'm sorry.
Is it, would a fence around the parking lot, lighting, and a timeline on when the lot could be used, be, would that be, would, especially to the person behind you who lives there, would that satisfy the issues that you have?
I think it's better for the neighbors who live next door.
I don't think this is working. It's working now. Brenda Horzlee.
Brenda Horzly. Um, what you just mentioned, a fence around the parking lot, closing down and all of those things. Those are the things that we've been asking for, for a couple of years. Uh, we've been asking for it. Um, it's, 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 if we're talking to ourselves, we're not getting it. Um, that, that the long parking lot that they're speaking about behind the building, that is not sufficient enough parking. And how I know this is not sufficient, I'm not talking off the top of my head. Had a business in there for forty five years. And I know the problems that we had with parking when everyone would come. So then it spills over to the clients are parking in my handicap spot. So hubby comes home, no parking space because it spills up our street. Because it's not sufficient parking space when everything is running there. But to answer your question, yes, if that was done, yes, all of that would help because we've asked for it to be done, but it has not been done. But you know, the issue is we live in Park Manor and not Chatham, first of all. This has nothing to do with Chatham. We don't live in Chatham. The business is in Park Manor, so that's been misleading right there. Um, so, and then you got a lot of loitering, after hour loitering um, in the parking lot along beside the building, after our, our sex. You know, your children, you gotta come out and, 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 and see this stuff. Yeah, you got a solution if somebody would do it. I'd have to say, yes, that is a solution.
I got you.
Thank you.
Comment?
Uh, hold, uh, uh. We, we have spent roughly seven hundred fifty thousand in the building to renovate, to get tenants. And I, I, you know, I, I want to collaborate, right? I mean, this fence and gate is, is nothing. I mean, lighting. Sometimes, you know, we, we are in commercial real estate business, we invest. I, I agree, I'm not there every day. I live in the suburbs. But, but we try to get things on. This gate thing is, you know, m- most of our, we're in the shopping center business, usually, you know, multiple accesses are usually open. Um, usually in private homes, you guys, you know, you put doors and cover those. If you guys want that, you know, that's, that's not a problem. This was not brought to me until now. Um, so I commit, you know, if that's what's going to take, you know, I commit to doing that.
Can I say something, um, real quick? A lot of those violations, he inherited those from when he bought the building. And like she said, she's been requesting it for however many years. It's not really possible to put a gate there, but I, I would recommend maybe putting a sign that you get told after ten PM. I think that would help. But a lot of the, but they keep saying it's coming from the salon, the trash, the, none of it is coming from me. The, and if you guys were just to come there, you would see there's plenty of parking. There's so many parking spaces. Nobody's parking and nobody's handicap. I always have a park when I come there. It's, it's, these issues that they're talking about, they're not really issues. I promise you, like, this is a great place for anybody to want to work at. I, I, I just think that they just don't want, they have issues with the building. I don't know what, they, they think the issues that they're seeing is with the salon and it, it has absolutely nothing to do with the salon. The trash has nothing to do with me. Like the parking has nothing to do with me. I don't have that many people in there. Even the building has people who are coming in their building, they're not there for hours. Their road's heavy. They, they come in and out the clinic, they come in and out of caps. They come, they're not there for hours to where they're taking up all the parking space. And I know this because I'm there and I know they live there and they think they see, but that is not it. I, I, that's not it at all. It's not it at all.
Any final word?
Um, I, I think we, we, we've said enough on the issues, although I would just remind the board that actually my request for a continuance was our intention to try to uh, address these building issues, which, which were maybe not the previously discussed. That was the, that was, that was the purpose. So we were willing to, and I believe that landlord's still willing to.
Okay. All right, uh, I want to thank everyone for, uh, coming here today and, uh, providing your input. We're going to take this matter under advisement. Thank you. Okay, uh, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Counselor. You can provide a brief overview and introduce your witness.
Um, my name is Abara Ekejugu for the applicant. Um, the applicant, um, is, um, a hair braiding outfit and we are seeking a special use, okay, to establish a hair salon uh, that is located within one thousand feet of an existing personal service, um, located in a B three dash one community shopping district. The applicant is, uh, Urel Beauty Hair Braiding. Um, it's a corporation and this is the president of, and owner of Urel Hair Braiding. Um.
Sorry, what, what's your name?
Abelwavi Blackto.
Okay, thank you. Um, do you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, and I do have a recommendation from the Department of Planning and Development that recommends approval of the proposed hair salon. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, I move that we convene into closed session pursuant to section two C four of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, we're in closed session.
I'm sorry.
Okay. I move that we return to open session. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're back. We will now vote. Note that any motion to approve a special use will be tied to the recommendations of the department and any additional conditions read by me. First, I move to approve all continuance requests to the date stated by me. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the continuances are approved. I move to approve all withdrawal requests. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters denied. I move to approve application for calendar number 51424S. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board at its March 21, 2025 regular meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the continuances are approved. I move to approve all withdrawal requests. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the withdrawals are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 51424S. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
No.
Commissioner Soto?
No.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
No.
I vote no, the matter is denied. I move to approve application for calendar number 4625S. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board at its March 21, 2025 regular meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the continuances are approved. I move to approve all withdrawal requests. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the withdrawal is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 51424S. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
No.
Commissioner Soto?
No.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
No.
I vote no, the matter is denied. I move to approve application for calendar number 4625S. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board at its March 21, 2025 regular meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the continuances are approved. I move to approve all withdrawal requests. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the withdrawal is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 51424S. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
No.
Commissioner Soto?
No.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
No.
I vote no, the matter is denied. I move to approve application for calendar number 4625S. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board at its March 21, 2025 regular meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, we're adjourned.